Second, two thousand fourteen, Atlantic City Council meeting order. Kathy and Lynn are both absent from the meeting. They're excused absences because she could say. Now, we need to add one thing to the consent agenda. Item G. I'm just going to visit a little bit about the application that Atlantic Park Corporation put in for Shelby's quarry for Vision Iowa grant. It'll be a letter of support and I'll explain that to us, but so we get to that part.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Are you none on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed. Consent agenda. Item A, approved minutes at a June eighteenth, two thousand fourteen council meeting. Class A liquor license for Atlantic Gotham Country Club. A class C liquor license for Rumors Lounge. Class B beer permit, Chamber of Commerce. And a class E beer, public dance license, Rumors Lounge. And a F fireworks display permit, Mission Hills Golf Course, Golf Club, July fourth, two thousand thirteen. I'd like to see you approve those items first and I'll explain G for the last part of consent.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, second to approve A through F. Clarify that. Consent agenda. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed. Item G is quarry. Roger, Harry gave me this yesterday. They're looking, they're putting in for Vision Iowa grant. Hopefully get the quarry finished. And we're looking just for letter of support from the city council. And that's basically all it boils down to. I mean, it's, um, the more propaganda we get on Vision Iowa, the more they like, they like to kill trees, my understanding. That's their, that's their vision. I'm not sure how it works, but. So basically, if we have any problem with that, if not, it's just, there might be some matching funds somewhere down the road, but right now we're just looking for support from Vision Iowa. So, and we gave back, we gave back hundred thousand dollars about six years ago. Six years?
Something like that.
Yeah. We gave a hundred thousand dollars back they gave before, but we've done a lot of work out of Shelby's quarry and a lot of, and probably ninety percent of that work has been done with any public funds. It's been volunteer work, so hopefully that's going to help us score better on that and get that, that icon, a bigger, better icon for it. So if there's no questions on that, I'll make a motion to accept item G.
I make a motion to accept item G on the consent agenda.
Have a second. Motion, second discussion. Are you none on favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you. Item three, approved issuance of notice of violation of city ordinance, chapter ninety-six, entitled Building Sewer Connections to Craig Raffinson at three oh five Cedar Street. John, do you want to explain that?
Actually, Mark Perry brought this in.
Oh, okay.
This is for Dan, so you've got a copy of the violation notice in front of you. Basically, he tied into the city main without getting a permit, without having inspected several violations. And unfortunately, the way he put it in, it protruded into the main, which has caused blockage and problems. So basically, this is telling him he's going to have to go back and correct it.
When did he do this? When did he do this?
You know, I'm not sure. I don't think it was that. I think it says right here on March eighteenth, the city today became aware of it.
Oh, God. Some in the back, back there. You're going to come to the front?
Huh?
Yeah, come to the front.
Come to the podium.
Yeah, speak at the podium. Cameras have to see. I've got to make comments on public TV.
Really?
Really.
I just have a question about this.
Kim, you got to identify yourself.
Okay, Kim Page, item at three oh four Cedar, which is directly across from Craig. My question is, he's been there longer than I have. I've been there eight years. He's lived in that house longer than I have. We got in that new sewer line, liner last year. They are the ones who, let's see, they broke my line, they broke my house at three oh two. They also broke Craig's. So I'm kind of wondering how he can be in violation when he's already had sewer line there.
Well, anytime you make a reconnection, the sewer line, you get a permit.
How did he reconnect? He didn't reconnect. He tried to fix what the, the company that did the liner screwed up. He notified them that they couldn't, he couldn't use his sewer. And they said, it's your problem. That's when the city came out.
Kim, he can request the hearing and he can.
Well, I'm just curious about this. I mean, how could he not have sewer there?
Yeah. So after, after he receives this, uh, this notice, uh, he can come to the council and explain if he wants to.
Okay. So we don't take any action? He's making approval, the issue it.
Approval. You're just giving notice.
Yeah.
And this comes at the recommendation of Mark Perry here.
So he gives him an option to come by and he can, you know, explain himself what happened. And he's already been given an issuance. Kathy?
This is the official notice.
This is the official notice.
Okay.
Under the ordinance only the councils can, it's a little strange, but the council, you give notice of violation.
We have to approve it.
Yeah, to approve if you notice it.
Okay. That's for fifteen and sixteen year, twenty year, whatever. Good.
So we just need to make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve the issuance of notice of violation of city ordinance, chapter ninety-six, entitled Building Sewers and Connections to Craig Raffinson at three oh five Cedar Street.
Got a motion?
Circle.
Second. Discussion. Chris, you're ready.
I, I, I guess if it's something we've done.
Well, he'll have a chance to come by and say his case.
True, but can I stop it also after I did approve it?
Huh?
I mean, we're going to put this out, this notice out to him and then it's just going to go on down the road. I mean, he's going to come present his case.
I don't know what all happened.
Well, I don't either.
So I mean, that's going to present his case and within our case, but probably more to it than, than, you know, to.
All Mark, all Mark told me was that he, he attempted to connect it himself without, first off, seeking a permit. And he did not use a licensed plumber, he did it himself. So Mark said that there, that he did connect it, Craig, that, that the property owner did connect it that way, which is in violation of the ordinances.
Okay, and you have the discussion. Are you none on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed. Item number four, third reading of ordinance nine fifty-two, entitled Airport Land Use and High Overlay Zoning Ordinance. And did they give you that little task to explain that part?
They did.
Okay. I think Chris had a question.
Reporting harder with Southwest Iowa Planning Council. So yeah, what was your question on this?
When we read through the ordinance, I saw needs further review. I believe it said NR in the ordinance, or more review was needed.
Um, the review, to my understanding, the next review is it just goes to the county and the county will review and approve. That's the next step, to my knowledge. There's no other additional.
This would be like heights of structure.
Mm-hmm.
And it just said something about needs further review, more review required, and that's what I was wanting to touch on.
Think that's the county, the county did a little, that's what, were you step one or step two, I think?
Yeah, that's how I understand it as well. And basically, the reason, the only reason you actually have to look at this is because that's what the DOT is requiring. We know that you have absolutely, other than having the airport nearby, it's technically not a city operation and all of those things, that it's in the county. And that's, it's just.
No, it is a city operation.
Oh, excuse me. It is a city. I'm thinking of the wrong city, excuse me. But yeah, this, the county will still have to have the review and I, it's my understanding that the county will still, just once we get past that, that stuff will be ironed out.
Is there any structures out there right now that's going to have height restrictions?
Now, now.
No, we built, they built, they had to know, they had to get a, they had, they had to go to the here, well, they had to go to the, the heights, whatever they call it. What's the board we have? Airport.
Like airport zoning. Top structure.
Top structure board. Make sure you build that, you got to go to that board before you're going to approve it. If you don't go to that board, then you could be in trouble.
Yeah, top structure board.
Okay. All right.
With that, I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance number nine fifty-two.
Second. Got a motion, second. Any discussion? Are you none, Debbie?
Jimerson?
Aye.
Hayes?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Court?
Aye. Ordinance nine fifty-two, passed on third reading. Item number five, now at the time, place for public hearing, proposed urban re-vibration plan. Debbie, any, we do have some written stuff, I know that.
Received this written, I.
You got one written, I got.
Date of June twenty-sixth, Charles Griffin.
We got one from, from Ann Pross. It's like coming an email form to everybody today. I'll go ahead and read that. Any phone? Debbie?
Pardon?
Any phone message?
No, I just.
Any from the council first, but read this.
I've had some comments from Don.
I've, I've had comments. Everybody I've talked to was for the, the tax abatement program. The only comments I've heard is the Pine Ridge thing up in that area there. That's the only comments I, negative I've heard about the whole thing. Debbie really pretty much for the whole pine, majority of everybody I've talked to, we I've talked to, is for it and it's been long overdue. So I'll read what Ann wrote. Mary Jones, member of city council. I did some research on the issue of tax increment financing and tax abatements. I learned some interesting things and thought I would pass along four main points. Point one, she spoke with Mark at Iowa Legal City, serves as a key resource for municipalities, and asked him to follow the following. Can a city implement a tax abatement in an area that has recently received a tip? Mark responds, yes, it is a common to be done. Number two, are there any legal, any legal issues that would prohibit combining a tax abatement in an area that's recently received a tip? Mark responds, would not be disputed, it's not breaking, it's not breaking new ground. Item number two, according to county, as the county assessor, Pine Ridge development to date has created three million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars in assessed value. Point number two on that, on item two, based on two thousand fourteen assessed value of over three million dollars, a tax base necessary to pay off, near many tip, the debt is already in place. And item number three of that, number two, is the minimum assessed agreement for Pine Ridge is nine hundred seventy-one thousand, five hundred and five dollars of added tax valuation, which has been more than three times over. Number three, according to Des Moines Register, the housing project in Grinnell that is using six different kinds of tax credits to fund a project, including state and federal historically tax credits, low income housing credit, property tax abatement, and gray field and brownfield tax credits. Item number four, according to the two thousand thirteen Atlantic Housing Study completed by the Southwest Iowa Planning Council, currently there are the shortage of housing units in two hundred thousand dollar plus range. Yes, my husband and I own a lot in Pine Ridge Estates and we have been contemplating building a new home on that lot for more than two years. Whether we personally build a home or not, I feel it's important to help Atlantic grow. Based on new home starts over the last several years, the residential growth in Atlantic is certainly not in a significant growth phase. It's my understanding, the objective of the urban re-vibration plan is to encourage new construction of and remodeling in addition to in residential and commercial properties through tax abatement of the value of improvements. Improve economic conditions and housing opportunities in the area and take steps to enhance the general attractiveness of the urban re-vibration area. Keeping these objectives in mind, why would Pine Ridge Estates lot be excluded from the plan? Again, it is according to the Iowa Legal City, it is a common to have both a tip and tax abatement in the same development. Plus more sufficient, efficient property taxes are being received due to twelve downtown homes to pay off the tip debt. It's critical that we grow our community and create a stronger tax base, more jobs, restaurants, quality of life events, businesses, amenities, housing, inventory of all these items are important to a positive future of our community. Utilizing this, multiple layers of growth is common, it's going to be utilized by cities across the state. Let's take advantage of the tools to keep our community healthy and growing. If this is planned, we're to doubt by respectability, that all areas may be included and eligible for a tax abatement. That's from Ann Pross. Comments from the council?
I would just thank her for this input on item number two. Is, are those dollar figures accurate? Is there someone here that can answer that? Doug or somebody else?
I'm talking ahead. I wouldn't dispute it, but I don't have the numbers in front of me.
And you got these from Lynn?
I got them from Dale yesterday.
Dale yesterday?
And those are two thousand fourteen assessed values.
Okay.
Dave?
Hey, Don, we'll get to public in a second. Thank you.
We did have some comments and John and I sat down and I apologize, I'm, I'm, you're getting second string because this isn't something I've been working on, but we did sit down and kind of talk about some of the comments that we've received in our office and things that have been brought to our attention. And I'll just kind of go through those for you and some of the responses that we have, if that's all right. Okay?
One second.
Okay.
Anything else from the council? Basically, I just want to say one thing, the main reason for tax abatement is we're trying to get something, we know in the next four or five years with the commercial tax going back the other way, we're going to lose, start losing. States that are going to backfill our, our losses, but we know how the state works, once they lose their, once they spend that billion dollar surplus, we'll be down to, sorry, you guys. So my theory is, you know, we, we can give buy with the next three or four years, five years. I don't think there's a whole lot, with a whole lot of cuts anything with a good tax abatement. If tax abatement works, in five years, you've got all brand new taxes coming in for the next five to ten years. We're really going to need a tax increase. Or you sit back around and say, okay, well, yeah, they can, they will build it no matter what, you know, some will and some won't. I mean, I'm a person who sells, I know, give somebody a little incentive and they go crazy to try to get it done. And that's my theory. You can go back to the other side and say, you know what, they're going to build it, let's just not worry about it. And that's, you'll be back to, most of the reasons with that theory, you end up dying down the road. So you got to be aggressive and keep going. And I've said, I said this a couple of times, if we're going to have a tax abatement, let's beat the icon of Iowa. No, let's not, let's beat, well, kind of like this one, kind of like that, let's have, let's be, we want to be like Atlantic. So that's the whole philosophy behind it. Now we'll open it up to, we'll go with Courtney because she's got a lot of information and we'll go back to public after.
Yeah. We did receive some comments and basically, I'm just going to kind of summarize these for you and what, some of the options that we have considered for you. Obviously, this is a public hearing, you're not making any decisions, but some things just to consider. Obviously, this is a tax break on both your commercial and residential, both rehab and new construction. And one of the questions that we received is this, is this going to pay itself off in the future? And obviously, we can't answer that for you, you know, we don't know what kind of outlook the future is going to hold for tax incentives and things like that. But you already, the city already has abated all the taxes pretty much to start on industrial, which is your big moneymaker when it comes to taxes. And this does exclude your multi-residential homes, so they're not included in this, you're are, you're going to continue to get any tax, taxes that are included on that. With that in mind, obviously, you know, you're talking about a pretty good sized percentage of homes that are in the middle of the ground. And ten percent is a really big improvement on your assessed value. So there's going to be some homes that are going to do improvements that aren't going to qualify. You're going to have some that aren't going to apply for the qualification. Or you're going to have some that are going to do really well. And I think overall, knowing exactly what you're, what you're trying to achieve, it's going to make a lot of sense for you to do it in that aspect. We also had comments on submitting the proposals and having a prior approval, the kind of application portion, where we had a pre-application and then the full application, and some of the dates that were thrown in there. Basically, what we've said is, if you qualify for this from a pre-application standpoint, you're not changing the whole system. So there was the five criteria in there that you had to go through and you had to meet. And maybe it's staff, maybe it's not city council that goes through and says, yep, you would meet these criteria. That does not guarantee that they would get that tax break. You'd still have to meet your building permits, you'd still have to meet your planning and zoning requirements. None of those are going to go away, even if you are pre-qualified for your potential tax abatement. In addition, the other comment we had was on the, when it would start, if you had your, if you started your project before it was, before the tax abatement was initiated and actually signed, or if you waited until January one and all those little numbers. We referred back to the assessor's office on this and honestly, the comment was, we're going to look to see when your stuff was completed, we're going to send out one inspector, there's not going to be, we're not going to send people out twice to see when you were actually at that working point. If you had ten percent of your projects done, or if you had thirty percent. They're sending it out once. And really, honestly, from that, we would say defer to the enforcement of your assessor. That would be one thing that we would consider that you might think about changing is just changing that language. It actually takes some of the burden off the city as well. If someone ever wanted to come back and sue, then you can send them off to the county as opposed to the city. Lastly, was with regards to that TIF district. And one of the things that we thought, if you, if you were curi, if you were worried about the language, was on that last number five, where it says, until original, original, my bad, page seven, hold on a second. Project is not located in the area receiving either direct or indirect benefit from tax increment financing program. We kind of just added on to that a little bit to say, until the original requirements of the district or TIF district are met. So if it's already paying for itself, then maybe it would be something to consider. You have lots that are already generating enough income to pay for that TIF district, then maybe the next additional improvements would receive that abatement, was something that we also talked about internally as an option that you might consider for those individuals in those areas that would qualify for something similar. And then the last thing that I had here, actually, I think that's all my, my major points, was making sure that, yeah, all this, this isn't going to change anything else, you're still going to have to go through your proper processes. So even having this in place, if you have someone that's not going to meet their requirements of your other building codes and your other planning and zoning, they're not just automatically going to get this credit if they qualify from those five individual points.
Okay. So, since Pine Ridge seems to be the one that I'm hearing the most, and they, according to the information from Ann's email, number two indicates that that area is generating enough income to pay for itself. So randomly, let's say, the process decided to build a home, then, then under number five, that intent would be, lot could be considered.
Right.
As, as new and not prior.
Right, exactly. So you would have properties that may or may, you know, you have an option that's brand new and they've received your tax increment financing to build the road and it's going to take ten houses to pay for that. Those ten houses or ten lots aren't going to receive the abatement, but then maybe the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth will. So you have, you have those initial investments that you have to make, but then it allows for your builders, your, your people who want to construct new homes to take advantage of that and still expand your tax base in the future. Because, I mean, five years, once that's done, then you're going to be able to generate your income off of that.
Repeat that last part again about, right now, we got that TIF out there, I think for twenty-second street and Pine Ridge.
The, the, the TIF for Pine Ridge, so part of that goes, you know, in the development agreement to the developer and part of it is being used for the dead surface on the improvements of, on twenty-second street.
So basically, we got nine hundred and five hundred million dollars in TIF out there.
I, uh, I have the figures right in front of me. I think there was around, I think he, I think you pledged nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, was it, I believe, in terms of minimum assessment, which was necessary.
To pay for.
To break even in terms of the payments to the developer. And then, again, some of the other dollars are being captured for the improvements, the other dollars right now are going just into the general pool to help lower tax, taxes for everyone.
Okay. So basically, the TIF is getting taken care of right now with the development we got out there right now. At the present rate, the TIF we got right now, the valuation we got right now, that is taking care of the TIF. We're over.
Right.
Worst case scenario would be valuations goes down to eight hundred thousand dollars. Don's still responsible for nine hundred seventeen. Then next five, six, before the TIF's over, if I remember the TIF right, so if that valuation, say if the valuation drops, clear out of wash, Don's still guaranteed at nine seventeen.
Right. I mean, the idea was, and I think at the time, Don thought he might be completed by the two thousand and thirteen in terms of build out. It wasn't designed so that a hundred percent of the dollars would go back to the development. You know, the idea was there'd be money there for the roads, there'd be, money's going back to help lower tax, taxes for everyone. Again, that could be changed, that was what was determined. It wasn't ever designed so that, gee, it's, it's just going to break even. And anything over that would go back to the development.
Okay. Okay, Courtney?
Just one last thing, the timeline. Even though you're having your public hearing this evening, if there are ten percent of the public wish to sign a petition and have another public hearing, you have thirty days to do so per the requirements before, so it can be on your next city council meeting.
Audit's today or just a public hearing? It's audit.
Yes. So they can request an additional public hearing. Yes, sir.
Doug, when you say everyone is benefiting, everyone possibly could be benefiting from the amount of, of tax revenue, are you talking about people at Pine Ridge?
I'm talking about just the general taxpayer. I mean, they're paying taxes that go in, help pay for dead surface, for general operating the schools, everything. You know, all the, all the tax dollars aren't going back into the development as an incentive, was never designed that way.
Okay. And I got to back up, I just, I, for something that Debbie's going to read Charlie Griffin's letter. You want to do that, Debbie?
I have yours, you've got yours.
Yeah, I'll be right down if you want me to.
Here, I'll shift off to the side.
All right, I'll get it. To Atlantic citizens, dated June twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, this is from Charlie Griffin. I write to urge the council members to reject urban re-vibration ordinance proposed tonight, July second, for the reasons. Number one, it would benefit a few, very limited number of citizens at the expense of the rest of the citizens. For every dollar that is forgiven, developers and none other dollar must be raised from taxpayer compensation. Number two, if passed, ordinance would allow the city to condemn, if passed, the ordinance would allow the city to condemn any property to make way for private development. Item three, and so far, as proposed, ordinances would primarily encourage residents' development as an ethical application of that section of the Iowa code, enabling tax increment financing. That's from Charlie Griffin. Any more comments from the public?
Yes. Could I speak first? I got an inter-meeting I got to go to. I'm Pat McCurdy, I'm president of CADCO, Council on Development Corporation. We're definitely for.
The abatement.
Citywide, for everybody that qualifies for it. We just want it to be fair and equitable and simple, something that will benefit the whole community. Our goal to CADCO, our mission is economic development, of course. We're here to help, the businesses are here to expand and grow their businesses and hopefully to attract businesses to complement the ones we have. I'm kind of like a kid at Christmas with Santa Claus when we have new prospects, which we have a lot more than you realize. I can't wait for them to get here because we've got such a great community to show them, you know? Invariably, we'll be talking about all the great things we've got. I don't want to mention a lot because I'll forget some, but it'll come down to three things. I wish you were closer to the interstate. Have you got the workforce? Okay, we're gonna relocate your community housing. Well, the first item, our location, we can't help where Mr. Whitney located Atlantic Island. Can't move the interstate. We can't do something about the other two items. The workforce, we can, if we pay enough, we will get the workforce. Housing, I feel we can, maybe not totally alleviate it, but we can work on it if we have a strong TIF program and abatement program. And then, the main thing I wanna talk about is on the commercial side. Like it or not, we're competing with every county seat in our community, probably the whole state. And one thing we have in our advantage is Iowa Western. Because they'll say, well, we wanna come here, but our employees need to be retrained, and Pross will work with us in any way she can to help us. You know, that, that's a plus. And of course, our goal is, whichever other community's goal is, to get these high-tech IT jobs, the high-paying jobs. Well, they're not gonna need a factory. They just need a smaller, you know, maybe a small building to put up, or to rehab a building that's already here. So they probably will not qualify for a TIF. But this abatement would be a lure to get them here. And like it or not, this is the twenty-first century, we're competing with every other community. We need everything to help progress and move the city ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Other comments?
Yes.
I've never done this, so I don't know exactly how I'm supposed to do this. But I read through this yesterday, and I found a lot of things that I didn't agree with. I live at eleven oh eight Roosevelt Drive. If you don't know where that is, think of Heritage House as my backyard, okay? First thing in your introduction says that the area would be a present, reason for the presence of substantial number of deteriorator, deteriorating structures. I don't think eleven oh eight Roosevelt Drive fits that category. So I don't understand why the whole city is involved in that. Most everything's south of Tenth Street, south of Seventh Street, it's in pretty good shape. So I'm, I don't understand why that's classified as a blighted area where I live. Area represents prominence of buildings or improvements that have a history of architecture or significantly preserved, restored, or, in other words, historical. So my house is about fifty years old, does that classify me as historical? There's no definition of historical from my standpoint. I'm assuming you're talking about things like downtown, where we've got buildings that were built in the early nineteen hundreds. But since there's no definition, then I guess my house is historical and I would fall under this. So I think this is kinda poorly written. The other thing that says, or an area which is appropriate as an economic development area as defined by section, and I don't know what that code says. My question to you on that point is, Heritage House is my backyard. Heritage House for years has said they want to expand. Are they gonna be able to come in and condemn my house, take my house, and build where my, where I live? Under this ordinance, under this proposal?
What are you reading it from, Doc?
This is, this is your, the introduction to the urban renewal thing.
There ain't no, number one, you can't, you don't condemn property in Iowa now. It's a long, 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 it's gonna be a longer process if we're good and try to get the airport going. I mean, that's just, I don't know where the combination come through.
But it says, okay, part of this, it says the area, which is appropriate as an economic development area. Well, we got a lot more older people in town, and there's gonna be more. And so Heritage House becomes a bigger and bigger economic impact. Does that mean that they can come down and take everything on that side of Roosevelt and build on it? And are we gonna give them a tax break for doing that?
I, I think they'd qualify for the tax break. I think the mayor's right. It wouldn't allow them to come down and condemn your property. I mean, this plan wouldn't do that.
Okay. But that allowed, okay. Designation criteria. It says here, the housing assessment was completed during August thirteenth, residential property within the city. Study has unfilled City Hall. The findings of the study determine that Atlantic's residential housing stock meets a criteria of a blight finding. How is it possible that the whole city is a blight finding? Who did that study? Where did that come from?
South of Iowa, FCO did it.
How did you determine that the whole city was a blighted area?
Blight is determined by twenty-five percent, this is the state code, twenty-five percent of your overall structures in fair to poor condition. So based on going a drive-by survey, this is just driving by, we rated houses on a poor, fair, good, and excellent condition. Excellent being new, good being not new, but in good condition. Fair meaning they have two or more things wrong with them on an exterior view. For, a four or four being they have three or more things wrong with them. So based on twenty-five percent of the total housing stock was either above, it was either above twenty-five percent, or at twenty-five percent of the housing stock was in fair to poor condition.
I think it's thirty-three percent, I think.
Yeah, I knew it was, it was significantly higher than twenty-five.
How many?
Fifty-four point seven.
Wow.
Fifty-four point seven.
Less than good condition.
Fifty-four point seven?
What qualifies them to make that determination?
Yes, fifty-four point seven is what they, what they came up with.
You drive all over the city?
Every single street.
What qualified you to determine these, the evaluations?
We have a housing staff that is very qualified with over thirty years' experience between all of them. I would say it's more than that, but.
What are their qualifications?
We have planners on staff, we have housing specialists. I mean, I would have to pull our resumes to let you know exactly, but lots and lots of housing experience.
Most of it comes, most of it is basically due to the age of houses.
Yes.
Most of, most, probably seventy percent of our stock in Atlantic built before nineteen sixty. That's probably where most of, most of the ratings are coming from, in a general rule.
Also, it talked about ag land, taking ag land for this. And it referred to blighted ag land. What the heck is a blighted ag land? The blighted ag, agricultural land would be, would be a target for this, or this urban renewal? Do you have a definition of blighted agriculture land? I don't know what that means.
That I do not know.
Okay. I think some of this stuff, Doc, we're trying not, we're trying, we're kinda pattering off another one's tax abatement program, and I'm gonna probably think, might be something like Adele, where they have a lot, a lot of area that they're looking for new housing. Something that Woody might, might have come off that, so we're not inventing a whole new will. Something that probably won't pertain, won't pertain us at all. Something that we can, you know, we can strike out. That's what I'm probably hearing forward, because I made that outside of it.
Didn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah.
Under F, it says proposed land use. Revitalization areas proposed for new and expanded commercial residential development in those areas that comply with the city's zoning ordinance. I don't understand what that means. Tell me, tell me what that means.
Comply with the city zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
They gotta build, they're gonna build within our, what our, our P and D sets down. I mean, that's, we got ordinances for different buildings, different, which you can build in certain areas and which you can't. I mean, your P and D takes care of most of that. That's, they gotta call, they gotta be, with the P and D lesson due. I mean, you can't go build a, you can't build a gas station on Azen, or Azen, Lim, because that's, that wouldn't be in, P and D will not let you do that. They're already said you can't do that.
It goes back to me again. Heritage House, multiple units.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I'm single unit, single second, I'm on R one, R two, I assume. If they decide they want to expand, can they change mine to R five?
There'll be a, they couldn't do it, but a council could do it down the road. But P and D could do it. But that's a lot of, trying to change zoning is something you don't wanna do right away. We got a couple requests to change the owners on the highway, and we turned it down. So I mean, that's something you probably step lightly on.
But if you're, if you're going to give them a big tax advantage to do that, they would probably, they might wanna try that.
They could, anybody, anybody could try it. But it's up to the council and the P and D, though. P and D would have to approve it first, then the council would have to approve what the P and D recommended.
They could try it without even having this revitalization program.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this would give them more incentive to do it. You don't have to pay taxes on what you're, I'm assuming Heritage House is a tax-paying organization, even though they're.
No.
No, no.
They don't pay any taxes at all?
They're like, they're like.
Okay, so then they don't care. Okay. Eligibility improvements under H. It says eligible property improvements such as a plan include rehabilitation additions existing residential. In addition, new construction in vacant land and/or land with existing structures is also eligible for tax abatement. For the purposes of this plan, the term "commercial" does not include properties classified as "commercial" as of January fourteenth, but reclassified as multi-residential as of January. What does that mean? It's not on January fourteenth this year, it is next year?
I think, Doc, that's, that's relating back to the change in the state law, where right now, multiplex apartment units are classified as "commercial", and the state says now they will be reclassified as multi-residential, which will be at a lower, will actually get a rollback, so be at a lower tax, not rate of evaluation.
And that is because of?
The state law.
Because this is a renewable, urban renewal area?
No, just the state law applies to everything. So I think the idea of the committee was, is since they're gonna have their taxes rolled back and over, I think, a five-year period.
We don't wanna bait.
They'll get a forty percent. They didn't wanna double dip and say, well, you're gonna get the rollback in your value, plus you'll get the abatement.
Okay, that's good, because I, I just didn't understand that at all. Actual assessed value added to by improvements. So I know of a house that is assessed for a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, that sold for eighty-five thousand dollars. Okay?
It's assessed value, not selling price.
So ten percent increase would have to be seventeen thousand dollars, not eight thousand five hundred dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, to verify that, we're trying to make that perfectly clear. And I instructed John, I said, when we get, this all gets passed, there'll be a little piece of paper you'll sign, you're gonna protect the abatement. It's gonna show, do you understand this is assessed value? And explain it to them, they're gonna sign on the bottom of it, if they don't come back a year, two years later and say, oh, I didn't know that. We're trying to make it very clear, it's assessed value. It's not what you sold it for, it's not what you put into it. If you put twenty thousand into a house, and assesses that ten thousand improvement, that's assessed value. If you put ten thousand, assesses that thirty percent, you know, it's assessed value. Assessed value increase.
Okay.
So our base rate still stays the same, and then the news coming in, we'll get a tax abatement, and hopefully that'll come in enough to offset, start having better taxes coming down the road.
Okay. So obviously, because of this house that was a hundred and seventy-one, and the tax assessed value, and it was purchased for eighty-five thousand, it means that that house was downhill compared to what it was. The idea of this ordinance is to increase blighted houses, correct? Make our community look better.
To increase, increase the overall evaluation in Atlantic.
Okay. So wouldn't it be logical that you would wanna do it on the eighty-five, not on the hundred and seventy-one, to bring those houses up? What the actual value of the house is, what it's sold for, versus what the tax says it was, because it went downhill? Do you wanna bring it back up? If the idea of the tax abatement is to make the blighted areas look better, it seems to me that that may not be the best way to value them.
The tax abatement is to keep your current tax base, so you're, hopefully you're not, you're not, you're not taking, cutting your tax base out. Hopefully, you're gonna get people incentive to buy that eighty-five thousand, would start putting money into it, and get the assessed value up. Because they're gonna pay, they're gonna pay taxes on a hundred and seventy-one thousand. They're not gonna pay taxes on eighty-five, they got a good deal on the house. You know, that's, they're gonna get a good equity deal. So if they wanna improve, put more into it, they're, they can raise their assessed value and get some tax abatement on that. That's the thing behind it. It's not to, not that we wanna keep the tax base where we're at, and hopefully start giving people incentive to do these things, get things, improve their houses and buildings, and then we have better tax bases coming down the road. So it's gonna be, in simply, it'd be a, it'd be a tax increase, but it'd be a, but it'd be a good tax increase. The value of their house is gonna go up.
Okay. Also, it says, all improvements in order to be considered eligible must be completed by in conformance with applicable regulations of the city of Atlantic. I don't think we have a building code. We not have, do we have a building code?
Electric poles.
Electric poles only, right?
Oh, we don't have a, do we have a sewer, plumbing sewer code?
Whatever state has.
We have an ordinance, for example, that you have to be connected to the sanitary sewer if you're living in a certain district.
We're talking about this right here.
Not in your house.
Yeah.
So, then under timeframe, it says, the area shall be eligible for tax increment under the revitalization plan for improvements, qualified real estate, honored before December thirty-first of seventeen. And then in the next line, it says, if in the opinion of the city council, the desired level of revitalization has been attained, and econ, or economic conditions are such a continuation of the exemption granted, would cease. Who's gonna determine when we reached this, end of this revitalization thing?
The council, well, the, the plan is, if the thing is working, the council will address it in two thousand and seventeen. Threaten everything to the council at that time, and they will say, this has worked, it hasn't worked, or, you know, we can, we're gonna increase it. They can, they'll have to address it. They just can't go away quietly, they'll have to say yay, no, or yes or no to it.
Be it some signed clause.
Yeah.
Bring it back up in front of the public.
They wanna do it or remodel it. I mean, they can do whatever, if this goes through, whatever, maybe something didn't work in it, which probably's gonna happen. But we, you won't know till you try it. So if something didn't work, you say, you know what, maybe we tweak this and make this work better and take this off of that. So we got that taken care of. That's the idea of trying, that, that part there.
So are we gonna use the same people who said it was blighted to say, yes, you're, you're not blighted anymore? Is that, is that the point of this?
No, the point of that is to relook, redo, if we need to redo, extend our tax abatement or re-modify it a little bit.
And you're gonna determine that, that group will determine it at that time?
At that time.
But we don't know how, they're gonna determine that.
They'll say yes or no. I mean, they'll, they'll look at the historical, what we've done in the last five, this, this, future five years, and they look at it in seventeen or eighteen? Whatever it is. Yeah. So they'll look at it then and say, you know, this, this has worked. Was, was, you know, we like what's going on, or, you know, we, it didn't work, and why are we doing it? Or we need, we need to re, relook at it this way, or, or do something different over here or over there.
Okay.
Again, the object, make, make sure they do something, don't just let it, that might, let, let you make a decision on something.
So two thousand and seventeen, this is gonna happen again in a council meeting, like this? Someone is gonna say, yes, it's done, no, it isn't?
The council will make a decision on that.
Make a decision.
But it'll be probably a different public.
Under residential rehabilitation, which is the whole idea, that's to rehabilitate houses. What if the house is so badly rehabilit, so badly deteriorated, and we've got some of those in town, and they really can't be redone? So you tear the house down. How long do you have to wait for the tax? Do you have to wait a year and a half that we're behind in taxes, to go back to the lot, to discern, determine how much ten percent increase is?
The houses you're talking about are probably in the ten and fifteen thousand assessed value right now.
Yeah.
You tear it down and put up a, a house, you're gonna be over ten percent.
Okay.
You're gonna be in destruction, and you're gonna have, you're gonna have a little, you'll have a pretty good tax abatement there for that.
Okay. But the difference would be, you get the tax abatement on the increase, correct?
On the increase.
Okay. Up to two hundred and fifty thousand. So the increase would be on the assessed evaluation before you tore the house down? Or the assessed evaluation after you torn the house?
Well, you're, you're two years out on, on valuation. So basically, I would say just, then, I'm, I'm gonna clarify it. But right now, we say two thousand and fourteen, you got a house on Third and Cedar. And it's, it's ready to get tore down, valued at fifteen thousand. You build a house for a hundred and fifteen thousand, you're gonna get a tax, you're gonna, you're gonna get an assessment on.
A hundred thousand.
Yeah, a hundred thousand.
Okay.
And I think some of that, for the older houses, it's, it's, you know, landlords wanna look at some, get some of the blighted houses and start remodeling them, especially get incentives for them to get, have a good rental houses in that area.
Right. Right. Oh, on your, on your application review, you had the five points. One of them says, project has obtained a building permit. But we all know that when building permits come in, the amount that you put on the building permit may not be the same as what you sell, it's what you spent, right? I mean, just a fact of life, you get into a house, something's different. So is the amount of increase going to be limited by what you put on the permit? Or is it gonna be limited by what you actually do?
The county assessor determines what your value will be.
Be the assessed value.
It'll be the assessed value.
Before and after.
Your after assessed value is what.
You could pull your text record of knowledge, your assessed value.
Yeah.
You, you, you put a permit, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add fifty thousand to my house, and you only put in forty thousand, and the assessor says, well, you, you have, you raise it forty thousand, you'll get the abatement on that, above that ten percent. raised it forty thousand, you'll get the abatement on that, above that ten percent.
Really wouldn't have anything to do with what you put on your permit.
Yeah, what you pay.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to get a permit, and you know that permit numbers don't match normally.
No, permits more or less, it's a draw attention you're getting, you're doing something to your place. Make sure, make sure you're in a boundary, and gentlemen, come back, see you got to your place done, and make sure you close the property line.
Uh, you mentioned, section M talks about relocation provisions, and you don't anticipate the displacement or relocation of any persons or families or businesses as a result of the improvements made in revitalization area. Well, if this is a really blighted area, and you're gonna do a lot of improvement to a house, or to a business, whatever, uh, aren't you gonna have to have people out of there to do that type of renovation?
That would be on their own, because they're doing their own renovations, or the city is not moving people.
Okay, so you're saying, this, this provision is saying the city will not move you out?
Correct.
To do, while you're doing this?
Correct.
If they wanna move out, they can on their own, but this isn't forced?
Correct.
Okay, good clarification, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Don.
I think you need to question this whole thing, exactly how you're going about it personally, but I think there's a lot of questions that aren't answered here.
Okay. Other public comments? Okay, Don? Sorry to pin off earlier.
Just, just briefly, there is a, a lot of misunderstanding about TIF and tax abatement. It is, TIF and tax abatement are probably two of the best tools that rural communities like Atlantic and Harlan, Dennis and Shenandoah can use, because they fit, uh, in the cities they have, a lot of each other in maintenance. Earlier on, somebody in the letter mentioned that if we gave, did tax abatement, then that might raise the taxes on somebody else, because if you lose those taxes, well, that isn't true, because the, the, uh, the abatement is only on brand-new construction, okay? And so, if you build something, if they don't build anything, hey, there's no new taxes, so there is that benefit. Uh, on TIFs, they, uh, in, in our area, the tax rate is about forty-two dollars, I think in that range, forty-two dollars. And then, when you do a TIF, you can't claim the whole forty-two dollars, you have to allow money for the debt of the hospital, and the school, and the city, and those things. And in, in Atlantic's case, it is, uh, about six dollars. So, the, the net value that the city can claim on a TIF is thirty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. And in the, since it was mentioned here, in Pine Ridge, right now, there is, as she mentioned, three million one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars in tax value for the year two thousand and fourteen. And right now, as I understand up there, we're planning on about another million dollars worth of building. Right now, under our present tax rate, and what the city can claim, there is sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-two cents coming into the city, if the city uses the whole amount of TIF. Um, I would disagree a little bit with Doug, where he's only using part of the TIF, but he's letting the other roll back to the other taxing entities. I think these TIFs are an opportunity for the city. As an example, Newton is doing a ten thousand dollar per house rebate to anybody that'll come in and build a house, up to forty houses, this is developers, whoever will build a house in Newton, over a hundred and sixty thousand, gets ten thousand dollars. If this, and, and as you know, up here, I think we've got maybe a hundred and eighty thousand left to pay, so at sixty thousand, it can be paid off in three years, plus a little bit of interest. So, then the city, at that point, will have somewhere in the area of seventy-five thousand a year coming in. Now, you can't bank TIF funds, you can't put them over here in the bank and say, well, three years from now, we'll do a project, and we'll use it up. It has to go against debt. But the city could use those funds, every penny of it, and pay off other TIF improvements in that area, and under the street, and those kinds of things. And I would think it'd be prudent for the city to do that, and that's not taking any money away from anybody else, it is just using the money that the city is allowed to use for their own, to pay back, uh, a debt. So, uh, um, that, that's just a couple things about it. Uh, I, I think if, uh, there's a, there's a, a sentence in the, uh, in the program here that says, "An applicant who was receiving either direct or indirect direct benefits cannot receive TIF." There's a, that's basic, there's two or three different phrases in here, there's some of them are saying that the city council can allow it, others saying they can't. Uh, but, uh, an applicant, if I sell the lot to somebody else, I was the applicant that did the improvements up there, so does that person qualify? I mean, that's a legal question that Dave would have to get into. And, uh, well, what I'm saying, it's just something that has to be considered going forward, you don't wanna get into a lot of legal action. But I do believe that it, if you're trying to promote construction, there's a million dollars there right now, it's gonna be there this year, there'll be more next year. Um, I do believe, as, as long as the debt is paid off, that those folks, I saw some notes that said that's double dipping. Well, I can put that on the other side, and I would say, if the debt is paid off, and the city doesn't give these folks tax abatement, the city is double dipping. Just think about it, because they're taking the taxes when really, the other folks are entitled to it, because the debt is being paid off. So, it's just a difference of opinion of how you look at it, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Don.
Any questions? Uh, one last thing, and I, I wrote the city council a letter, a month or so ago, and, and, uh, I'd like to introduce my grandson, Austin Sunday. Austin just graduated from Iowa State, and I'm hoping to do him into this business, where he likes to do it like I do, and do it for a living going forward. Uh, but I do believe that you really need to pay attention, that the city is heading, headed for a housing crisis. We had this crisis back in nineteen ninety, I think in my letter to you, I showed the number of lots that's available. When I first came to town back in the eighty, well, I came to town in nineteen sixty, but back in the eighties, we were building ten to twelve houses a year in Atlantic. Uh, the economy has changed, and things have changed, we've got more condos that offset houses, but if, if we wanted to build fifteen houses next year in Atlantic, Iowa, there's not a place to build them. And you don't correct this problem overnight, this is a problem that's gonna take two or three years to correct. I don't know where, where it's gonna happen, where the next lots are gonna be, but, uh, and then another problem we have is, you know, as Atlantic grew, Sunnyside Edition, you know, right now, those are very small houses, but they were good houses for a startup family trying to get started, cost was low, and then from there, they could move to a bigger house. Atlantic could use some housing of that size to get some of the families into town, that will bring more workers into town, and that will solve another problem in our workforce that we have.
Okay.
So, it's all related, it's all kind of together, and thank you much for your time.
Thank you, Don.
Good, I think it's evening now. Uh, my name is Jane Bell. Uh, I have, uh, I and my husband have owned residential, as well as commercial property in this community for over four years. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to you with two hats on, uh, this evening. Uh, first of all, uh, for almost over eighteen years, my legal residence was Council Plus, and I commuted on the weekends back here. Uh, I recently retired, so my legal residence is now back in Atlantic. Uh, during the time that my legal residence was in Council Plus, I had the privilege to serve, um, on the Board of Directors of the Potawatomi County Property Alliance, twice serving as chairman. Uh, so during that eighteen years, uh, it was the period of really a lot of growth and development in Council Plus, and during that time, we used TIF, we used tax increment financing, the TIF, we used tax abatement, we used historic tax credits, we even used cash, okay? I just wanna commend you for taking a step toward, uh, making, uh, development here in this community, uh, more likely. Uh, and I would hope that you would, you would consider all of the tools that you have. Uh, I noticed you also use community development block grants. We found in our blighted areas, our really, really blighted areas, uh, the city bought land, bought the houses. The ten thousand dollar house is probably only the value of the lot, and you can use community development block grant money to rebuild and give young people a start. I mean, it's, so I really do commend you. I, I will put on my other hat now, as I'm back here as, as a resident here, I have a house, uh, under construction in Pine Ridge. Uh, I would like to see this go through with Pine Ridge included, not necessarily for myself, that would be nice, but also so that that whole area will develop. It enhances my property once it's done, as well as enhancing the tax base for, for the whole community. So, I do wanna commend you for taking a step, I think it's a great step toward, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jane. Anybody else have public comments?
Okay, I'm concerned, because, I, I'm Kim Page, I'm down at three hundred, three oh, three oh four Cedar. I have bought property, two pieces of property from the city council, um, one is a vacant lot, one was a lot with two houses, we tore one down, we are fixing the other one up. I'm sure if you've driven by, you've seen the improvement. How is this gonna affect our area down there? Because I remember Mayor Jones recently sat in my living room, told my husband and myself how the area we live down here is considered the low-income area. How is that gonna affect us?
How's that gonna affect you?
Yes.
It's gonna give you incentive to redo their houses down there.
And what happens if they don't have the incentive to redo their houses? What are you gonna do? 'Cause we, you know, from what this says, you guys can basically, like this lady just said, take our houses.
No, don't take them.
No, no, no.
Well, this is what our concern is, this is what we're hearing, and this is what we're feeling.
Basically, if your house gets dilapidated, like some of the more down there, and no one takes care of them, you have a city vocal after some of that houses, there's no response from them, like we've done a couple times. The general rule, we'd rather see houses that get rebuilt, hopefully give incentives of either, like, people like you, who are rebuilding houses down there, or landlords restart taking care of their own property down there, and if they don't, you know, then we say, you know, you had, you had your chance, we, we got some very poor rental houses in Atlantic. Hopefully, it gives them incentive to do something with it, that's the whole thing behind it. So, it's, yeah, it's therefore the area down there, you can tear a house down, put a new house up on, you'll have a great tax, a tax break on it.
I know, I've already been contacted.
Okay.
And I don't wanna sell.
Fine, that's okay.
This doesn't deal with eminent domain.
No. Okay, so we're not, you, the city council will not use eminent domain to take homes away from people who don't abate?
There is, you're, you're talking, you might, go, go talk to legislature, because there, there, I guess, I mean, rules on that, eminent domain thing, that, it'd be, it's just, you're better off, if you wanna sell your, say your house were twenty thousand, and I kinda wanna buy, and you say, I want fifty thousand, you're better off giving you fifty thousand, trying to get an eminent domain, be a lot cheaper.
Okay. See someone like me with a three oh two Cedar house, um, we took it from a blighted house, which I'm sure you all know what it looked like, to what it looks like now. We've totally gutted it, revamped it, and now we're progressing. How does this affect us financially?
It may possibly, it may possibly reduce your taxes.
But you, you started yours in two thousand thirteen or fourteen?
Well, we actually started the front of the property where the first house was sitting that we tore down.
When, when did you start rebuilding your, your second, your housing back, was it two thousand fourteen?
We haven't, we didn't start that until this year.
And you'd be eligible for tax abatement.
Okay. When does that, it, does it come retroactive?
It's single active from January first of two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
Anything started after January first, two thousand fourteen, would be included in the tax abatement, that's what we're presenting.
Would be eligible to apply for.
Apply, excuse me, yes. You gotta be a ten percent minimum assessed value.
All right, that's all, yeah.
Okay. Any other public comments?
I'm, just comments, I mean, we're, we're not experts, and that's why we've brought on these people to help us out. We don't have all the answers, we're looking for them, that's the reason for the public hearing. Um, personal opinion, you know, I think it's a great tool, I don't know if it's gonna be enough, but we're gonna find out. Um, you know, Doc's comment, as far as, it's hard to imagine that you can have the whole town be a blighted area, but I'm in your same area, within, what, three, four blocks of ya, I can cite three houses between you and me that need major construction, I mean, they are dilapidated, and I consider myself in a nice area, but there's three houses that, if somebody doesn't do anything with them, they're not gonna be worth a dime. That's what we're trying to fix.
Trying to avoid.
Or, yeah, avoid. Uh, so, you know, like I said, at this point, we're looking for the answers, we don't necessarily have them all, that's the reason for the, uh, the hearing tonight, to get input from everybody, we're not trying to ruffle everybody's feathers, uh, we're trying to get it all worked out.
Yep. Um, one probably, two comments I wanna make, it looks pretty done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me, Dana, I didn't mean it that way. All right, he's pretty, he's bigger than I am too, I can see my price of my six can go up right now.
You're injured.
How much does that weigh? No. Um, basically, um, and, Don, forget me, um, ever since I've been here, I've been, I've been a supporter of Mr. Sante's project, 'cause I've seen the good it goes to the city, I've seen the millions and millions of growth out by Nishna Hill, from what him and a few other people started with tax abatements, um, front money from the city, um, TIF, and we got over five hundred million dollars of valuation out there, something I wrong, in that ballpark area, based on, you know, a few million dollars involved in, in, that we kind of gave tax abatement stuff on. That's where hopefully this law's gonna go to down the road. But everybody, I've always heard, especially this last VESK we had out by, um, the nursing home, you know, why are we, why are we giving this, why is Don getting all this money, and why is he getting that? And I, I kept telling everybody, I says, you know, he's putting his money up, but this tax abatement will give the public, the general public, a better tax break than Don gives on his TIF thing, if they do the tax abatement. So, it gives the general public a tax break to fix their own properties up, and I just want people to look at it that way, it's not that, we're not taking from anybody else, it's a tax, you can rebuild your property, increase your value, increase our tax base, but you're gonna get a tax break on it while you're doing it, till you get to that point. But that's my philosophy, you know, we're trying to help, the average says, if you give them the same breaks, why can't we get with Mr. Sante, I guess, well, you guys are channeled it together, and that's what I swear, it's on a smaller scale, so. And, um, I think that's about enough, any more public comment?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing's closed, I'd like to appreciate everybody's public input, thank you. I will add one more thing, I'm gonna ask Dana to do the community development, and we're gonna address Pine Ridge thing in that area, uh, next couple weeks, we'll have input, and I wanna talk to Ms. Bell somewhere down the road about some other committee things on building. Thanks, Jane.
Did I step in it?
Huh?
Did I step in it there?
We love, we love, we need, we love expertise, and we won't take a whole lot of your time up.
I don't need numbers.
Can I say one more thing? Everything that we do with these matters, we have to always say, and that's done also, we have to be doing this for the best interest of Atlantic, Iowa, looking to the future, and how can we make Atlantic better? And if, as, I'm old enough that it's not gonna make a lot of difference to me, that I don't need to go out and make this funds, additional funds, but I do have a real soft spot for Atlantic, and trying to make Atlantic better, so all the things we do, that needs to be the prime question, is it for the best interest of Atlantic, Iowa?
Okay, thank you, Don. I have a request from Atlantic, Atlanticary Chamber of Commerce to close Fifth Street from Chestnut Street to Poplar Street on July nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. Do we have a representative from the Chamber of Commerce? You don't have a letter from your dad, do you?
Yeah.
You're not gonna beat your fist on the desk?
Well, I might do that.
Okay, I got warned this morning.
I was told that we're supposed to grill her.
Yeah. I think you're challenging a, a track match.
That's weird.
So, basically, this is, um, called the Fifth Street, Chestnut Street, um...
Crazy date.
Crazy date, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it being an approval, or you want to ask her any more questions?
I make a motion that we approve that Atlantic Cherry Chamber of Commerce to close Fifth Street from Chestnut Street to Apostory Street on July nineteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you.
That was pretty easy, wasn't it? Thank your dad for all the grief he got.
No, not leaving, are you?
Item number seven, award contract for asbestos removal on six eleven Lynn Street. We got the good figures, John. I haven't looked at that yet. What did we go down to on that?
Went down a little bit from what we originally received from Horizon. So I think their original bid was forty-two that actually went up. It's at thirty-eight. I contacted, I tried to contact them. We're going to do another round of testing on the stucco. I had a number of contractors contact me, and they just, honest to forthright, and said that it's very rare for stucco to have asbestos to the level that it needs to be abated. And they said that you'll eliminate an extraordinary expense if you just do this testing, because you are at a very low level.
The two and a thirty-one thousand?
Yep. And so I, nice table. But yeah, I informed them that, you know, they were, awarding the bid, the project would be contingent on their acceptance if we do get the stucco not needing to be abated, that it would be eliminated from their proposal, or they'd have to be okay with that.
Okay.
I make a motion we table item number, is it seven?
Six.
I have seven on my list.
I was not seven.
Seven.
I make a motion that we table item number seven, awarding the contract for asbestos removal at six eleven Lynn Street.
Second. Got a motion second to table number seven, right?
Yep.
What is this property? Is it a home?
Just I want, right across from the, right on six eleven Lynn, right on seven and Lynn.
Right across the street from the Whitman Center, I believe.
There's a tower that's kind of leaning.
The leaning tower, leaning toward Lynn Street.
I got it.
Yep. It's leading towards Jeff's house. Leading towards your house now. Okay. Got a motion second, more discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, pass. Table number seven. Number eight, administrative report.
All right. I can't remember if I reported last time. Tomorrow is Mark Ferrier's last day. Tim Snyder started this week, so has been working with Mark going over to the plant. Mark is going to Guatemala as a missionary, so we wish him well. We've been working with the Cass County Environmental Health on trying to get a failing septic system on fifteen hundred block of Chestnut that's been failing and illegally discharging septicage over the neighbors. So Stephen Patterson's a sanitarian, and he has written the property owner, and said that it must be, I just got the letter, said that it must be corrected before winter, which I was a little taken back of why it would take that long to get this thing corrected. We've been dealing with it since the spring. Anyway, I'll check with him. I guess he does have to go before his board sometime later this month to get approval, so there is a process. And then I think they have to go through, before they design the system, they have to do a perk test to see how the system needs to be designed to handle the flow. I'm also continuing to work with Mark Allison of Selden Group on possible housing projects. He is leaning now in terms of trying to do infill development in older areas of town, which is kind of really ideal, but we'd like to accomplish. So, we're together, put together a list of thirty-one properties. Some of those have houses that could be, you know, be suitable for removal. But anyway, we're working with him. If you know, I've got the list, I can make copies, and if anybody knows of any potential lots. Some of these lots, I'm driving around and writing them down, they may not be for sale. But he needs about eighteen to make this viable. So we got thirty-one. Not all those are going to be viable. Some maybe, people may want too much for them. But anything we can do to help him, you know, identify the possible sites. I know he said that Glenn Sontag had contacted him about the parcels he has over off of Olive Street. So he's gathering that information, and we're working closely with him. Laurel Street, the block has been paved. The intersection's still not done yet. It's moving forward. We haven't been particularly lucky when it comes to weather and the rain, but, you know, they should finish up fairly soon. As soon as they're done with that, they'll move back to doing Seventeenth Street on the west side of Redwood and on the reconstruction of that. McCarthy Trenching is, I'd say, about ninety percent done with that storm during each project. We've called the Bassinaw Project. So that's coming along well. We've still been trying to get Century. Can you remember the Bull Creek Underground Tunnel that we were relining? And we just had one problem. We had to hold off on part of it because Century Link had an old cable in there encased in wood. And so we've been after them back and forth. They've been out a couple of times, and these times they said they didn't have the right material or equipment or something. It was an excuse or whatever, but we continue to hound them to try to get that finished so we can wrap up that project.
Doug, where is this, on Bull Creek? What part of Bull Creek?
Do you know where? Just on this side of Desperados. There's a hole there that you'll see with those coins.
The old BFW building.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Next to Dave's repair.
So right over there. That's, that street, I think, is.
Yeah.
So anyway, that hole's been there for months, and we're still working on that. We've got a request.
You want, I would just, based on the letters, that we're going to be filling that hole in short because of safety reasons. Do you want to, you know, you're going to require to redig it back out, to dig picture line? Send that to them, and that, that might speed up the process a little bit.
We're going to fill up that hole with that minute you said, and then?
We're going to fill up the last hole then.
Okay. We've sent a bid request for chip sealing and microseal projects for this year. Those bids are due July twenty-fourth.
That's a new process?
It's not a new.
I mean, for us, to us.
The chip seal, they've done in the past, but not in the recent. I mean, it's been quite a few years.
Are you all red chips?
Huh?
You're red chips, you mean?
Well, they can be red. They not necessarily have to be red, but I think they had used red a lot here. The, we're also trying a different process. It's called a microseal, which doesn't create the dust, and it's a little more expensive though, and so we're trying to, we want to test it and see how that works, how it holds up compared to the chip seal. I understand, you know, some people don't like the chip seal. It is kind of a mask, but if you don't protect that surface, keep, you know, water from getting into the base, then instead of just doing a chip seal, very inexpensive, then you're talking at the very least, at least milling and overlay or reconstruction. So, it's just part of the process of how we can go forward and maintain the roads in a cost-effective manner. Let's see, we've received the final inspection approval from IDNR on the wastewater treatment plant, and they said that all improvements are complete without any deficiencies. The time of their inspection, of course, that's also required with, under our agreement with the revolving loan fund that funded the project. We're still working with Molly and looking at whether our plant could handle their industrial waste. We handle their restrooms and some of their waste now, but they do their own treatment for their industrial and heavy metals. We've got a meeting, other meeting tomorrow, so that's ongoing process.
Any questions for Doug?
Going back to your first, first part of your report, the housing, refresh my memory, what was going on? Were we, we've identified there are some lots, what, what are they?
Yeah, some of those lots aren't vacant.
Okay. What are we building or trying to?
Well, what they would like to do is build what they call moderate income housing. Mostly duplexes. Said they're well-suited for seniors because they're zero entry. So, you know, we're looking at those neighborhoods. What I would recommend is those neighborhoods where that housing, I mean, they're going to be modest units, but in some parts of the town, it would really lift those neighborhoods up. I mean, it would be a much higher average value than the average properties around it, and I think it would be a good addition. You know, in some neighborhoods, you know, it may not be, it might not hold property values with surrounding. So I think you have to be kind of, you know, think about where's the best locations to place these.
And who's the organization again?
It's Selon.
Selon.
Yeah. Selon is a development group out of Omaha, and they work and they do, this particular project they're looking at is, would be funded with key development block grant funds. And there's a special category because of the storm that came, you know, I guess it predates me. Was it five years ago? Six years ago?
Two thousand eight flood.
I can't remember. This area qualifies for about three million dollars.
Two thousand eight flood.
Two thousand.
It's the last year you can get it.
So this is the last year. So they're, they're looking at trying to secure some of those funds to do this project. And they think it will score, you know, pretty well. They're going to have to get the economy to scale and find enough parcels. So, I'm going to make copies of this, but I'll make copies if anybody is interested. I'd be glad to get to you. I also went to a downtown, I remember, revitalization meeting, it was last Tuesday. The Iowa Department of Economic Development held that with their downtown redevelopment agency. And so they spent most of the day kind of talking about, you know, what's going on in other communities, what works, what are the opportunities, you know, what are the threats facing downtowns? Very interesting, they took a walk through our downtown. Everybody, all the participants, this was kind of a regional meeting. And then they came back and they discussed, you know, what they thought was good, what they thought could be improved, and had some ideas. So, that was a productive meeting. They also, our town, and they will do a two and a half day downtown assessment. Of course, as they will come in and they do tours of the downtown, they visit businesses, they interview leaders. They come up with potential areas of assessment, our business mix and development, I mean, do we have the right mix? You know, other things that are lacking, the physical appearance, the organizational capacity, the downtown promotion, volunteer development, and the downtown image. And they brought up some things that they thought that probably are greatly surprising of what we might be able to do to improve of our downtown. And so this might be some, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, but it might be something that the CACCO and the Chamber and the city might want to maybe think about joining together to get kind of a vision for how we can improve the downtown. Oh, also, twelve hundred Burke Street that we acquired, the street crew has demolished that and filled it in, so demolition is completed. Any questions?
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Mayor, before I go, a couple of things. Number one, I got a phone call today from one of our citizens praising, praising one of our city employees, Mr. John Lund. He had a commit or something, whatever it was, he said it just, he went on and on about, Kurt, he is professional and get things done up on Twenty Second Street. You know, when people make phone calls like that, I'll make sure citizens will know that. I hear a lot of day-to-day stuff, you know, from everybody in the city, but that was just more of a personal phone call. Thank you, John. Second item is, and there's some of the concerns that I've been hearing over and over, and I heard it again this morning. If we bring in an employer in town with these fifty new jobs, you know, where are we going to get those employees? Because a couple of companies in town are, you know, are having trouble finding employees. And then how do you get employees to town? You got to have housing. Still boils down to housing. So, I mean, that's the whole thing behind the tax abatement, is, you know, we got to get housing going, get better housing, get our lower housing up standard a little bit. We get more housing units involved, apartment houses or whatever. So, people do come to town, they got someplace to live. Because right now, I hear fifteen new teachers coming in, they're having heck of a time trying to find housing. I mean, that's a problem we got, and I, Don addressed it very well. That's something we got to really look at. We got to do some pension. We got to get things going now for five, six years on the road. Hope we can catch up with stuff, so. That's about all I have. We'll go to committee reports, council reports.
I had a special meeting for Parks and Rec on the twenty-fifth of June, and that was just to close out the fiscal year, paying those final bills. That's all it was. Nothing new there. And then I had the landfill meeting yesterday, last night. And Wendy said that the solar panels are up and it's running, that Leach Eight recirculated project is now up and running. They're just finishing up a few things on it, but it's currently working and working well. With that, she's looking to plan now an open house within the next four, six weeks, because a lot of people are interested in the solar panel project. Otherwise, business as usual.
Talking about the landfill, I'm going to talk with Wendy about, we talked about, since I quickly become mayor, about bringing a semi in and having someone come in, if we get rid of these TVs and old monitors and stuff, and hopefully they won't go in the ditches and see what, you know, we might have to come up with some money out of community development, or CPC or something, but see what we can do to come in and kind of clean up. There's, you know, there's just a lot of stuff people have in garages, and some are getting in the ditches, and maybe that might eliminate the problem. It'd be a good, a good cleaner upper, just for, you know, not all garbage, delivering towels, whatever it is, but monitors and that kind of thing. I'm going to look into that and see what's going to happen. Chris?
I had E nine one one last week. The architects worked on drawings, getting ready to turn them over, and then they go out to bid. But the AMU approached Rob about getting into an agreement where they would take phone calls for, in case somebody would lose power during the night. He said they average about two a month. Basically, it would be a, a switch gets flipped, they're done. Nine one one off would pick it up on a non-emergency line and dispatch them. So they're talking. Right now, they're in the process of coming up to an agreement, which I hope would save us some money on our end. That's, so Rob and Steve are just talking right now about an agreement. They showed the one up at Shelby. If a storm were to come through, they would be able to call somebody from AMU and tell them to go in, because you're going to have to cover your lines because we're too busy. I think, so it sounds positive. And then I had the fire department last night, real short meeting, paid the bills, scheduled some training. That's pretty much it on that.
Okay. Dave, John?
Okay.
Bob?
No.
Dana?
And that was, I reported on that last month because they've got a guy retiring, so they're eliminating that shift at night.
Okay.
I didn't have any meetings, but I had the ongoing saga with the library director. They've got a couple second interviews coming up next week. They've got two really good candidates that they're having a hard time. That's the reason for the second interviews.
Okay.
So at least we've got some choices yet. That's right.
Lori?
Not my meetings tomorrow.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
The, the two, the two actions that we have are petition for a title to append property. The property down by Fairway, the Hyman property, I did speak with his relatives, and they are going to demolish, they promised to demolish the yellow house, and I believe Bob also owns, or his daughter now owns the,
The blue one?
The middle one, the blue one, and they're going to demolish that as well. And I thought it was a very productive meeting with them. As for the other case that we have going on, that will be contested, and the trial will be held, but it's later on this month.
Okay. All right.
Oh. Mr. Mayor, may I make a statement?
No. Go ahead.
I guess I was a little caught off guard today. I'm certainly a great concern about use of eminent domain. I want to make it clear that the urban revitalization plan has absolutely nothing to do with eminent domain. When it comes to the acquisition or condemnation of properties, these are usually abandoned, and the public is usually coming to the city begging us to tear these down. And state law requires that a number of criteria have to be met before a deed is reassigned from an individual to the city. And there's also an opportunity for a public, for a, for a hearing before a judge to contest the city's action. David, I'm going to let the cat out of the bag here. We, when we're looking at properties to acquire, we are not looking at ones that are occupied by individuals.
We have never had any interest in evicting anyone from their home.
Nor are we basing our decision off of a private citizen coming to us and saying, I want this property so that I can profit from it.
Exactly, and I'll just finish with saying that I would not work for a community that would work like that. I view eminent domain for private gain as theft and immoral. And I work behind the curtain and anything, nothing like that has ever been discussed. I have been working for the city, and if it was discussed, I'd take my Cookie Monster mug and I'd find a new job. So, I hope that elays some concern.
Well, the eminent domain, I think people, they panic, and they have their right to panic, but if they just watch legislature, they got something and I'm a firm believer, if you're gonna go, if you wanna go buy a piece of property, like I said, if someone brings $20,000, say how much you want for it. And they say, I want $20,000, here, you know, be cheaper than us, spend another $100,000 trying to get a lawyer to get it taken care of, I mean, that, that, there's, there's a better way, do it as a go in eminent domain. You know, just do the pre-enterprise system, be a lot cheaper and longer, the eminent domain gets a long drawn out, it doesn't make money, it's just a monet化. And the party's against him.
All right. Is there, is there anything on the one on Locust next to the one we sold to Stan?
Uh, the Esther Abbott, Esther Abbott's property.
I'm not sure who it is.
That would be two, that'd be on the corner. Yeah.
If you don't wanna comment on it.
Yeah, I don't wanna comment on it.
Okay. Debbie?
The bill's total, $799,769.18.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, pass. Non-timeplace public forum, anything with the council would be brought up, but not on the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, I, I keep on hearing that we can retroactively do it and not retroactively do it, I've heard both sides. By the next meeting, can we know that for sure?
We can do it, because it's up to the county assessor. County assessor makes that decision on that, and we clarified that with them. That is.
I'll check with the,
Yeah.
I'll check with her.
As long as she locate current Bob Josses early, as long as she okay's it, she, it's up to her, and that's the reason why, what Britton said, Britton said.
I'd rather have it from her legal counsel.
Yeah.
I'll talk to her.
It's there.
Or written.
Mr. Mayor, what's, so what is the next step in that public hearing?
Uh, we gotta wait 30 days. If they want, 10% of citizens will want to find a petition with some of the public hearing.
Some of the suggestions seem appropriate.
We're gonna, community development will look at that here next week or two, and we'll hammer that out there.
I just got one thing. 906, we got, we tore a house down by Bull Creek here a couple years ago. Now, that half house, 906.
Hello?
Yeah, but I guess they gotta wait. High. It's right on Bull Creek.
He said, uh, okay, I think, I know, isn't like your little sliver?
Yeah, they, someone asked me about it this morning, I just said, as our test plot, see who complains the most about that, everything I want to get away with. I didn't fly either.
Okay, number 13.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?